Good evening, I'd like to call the May 8th meeting of the Board of Trustees for Johnson County Community College to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Other than our new senator in the room, we'll have the roll call and recognition of visitors. Jerry?
This evening's visitors include Dick Carter, Wade Brower, Nan Garcia, and Mark Ferguson.
Thank you. Next item is the open forum. Welcome to the meeting. Next item is the open forum. It's a section of the board agenda and a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. There will be one open forum period during each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak. In that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door at each board meeting prior to the open forum agenda item. We have no registered speakers for tonight's meeting, so the open forum is hereby closed. Awards and recognition. Dr. Sobchak.
Thank you, Trustee Cook. I'd like to defer to Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. This evening, we actually have two awards. The first award is the 2014 Newman Civic Fellows Award. Mary Smith and Pat Decker would come up. They'll offer that award to Mary Alice Coulter. Mary Alice Coulter is receiving the National Campus Compax Newman Civic Fellows Award, which recognizes community-involved student leaders. The Newman Civic Fellows Award honors the late Frank Newman, one of the Campus Compax founders and a tireless advocate for the civic engagement of higher education. Mary Alice Coulter has demonstrated a commitment to civic responsibility and advocacy throughout her life. While at JCC she has been involved in leadership roles with the Honors Student Association, she has served over 100 hours addressing critical community needs related to hunger, animal rights, and Native American awareness. Her ability to lead and motivate has been evident in her advocacy at Wayside Waifs to increase their volunteer base and enhance the quality of care in their veterinary clinic. She has become involved in research for feline leukemia and is committed to problem-solving and making a difference in the lives of others. Recognizing a need for new students to be able to connect with upperclassmen at Johnson County Community College, Mary Alice developed a peer mentor program which enhanced the academic experience for students enrolled in the honors program. She characteristically acts to make changes, whether large or small, that will improve the lives of others. We present this award to her. We're so delighted for her outstanding work here at Johnson County Community College. The next award, I'd like to, we actually, we have a very large crowd here. The Model United Nations Program at Johnson County is just an outstanding program. In 2014, the team received an Outstanding Delegation Award for its portrayal of Niger at the National Model United Nations Conference in New York City. JCC was evaluated using the following criteria: remaining in character, advocating for the assigned country's position in a manner consistent with economic, social, geopolitical constraints, participating in committees, and enforcing the proper use or using the proper rules of procedure. I have been up in the Model United Nations Room watching them do research multiple times. They're here in the summer, they're here throughout the year, and their work is just truly outstanding. Three students were chosen by the conference to be rapporteurs who assist with the organization of their conference committee: Erin Haffey, Caitlin Silva of Gardner, Kansas; Galen McGee of Overland Park, who served as the General Assembly Third Committee. The team also received an Outstanding Delegation Award, the Delegate's Choice Award, and three honorable mention awards in February at the 2014 Midwest Model United Nations Conference portraying Canada and New Zealand. So we've represented Niger, Canada, New Zealand. The work these students do is just truly outstanding. And what I'd like, there are more students here whose names that I have. If we could introduce yourselves and the awards they're receiving. Brian Wright, who's been an outstanding leader for this program, will do that for me.
Brian, before you do that, let me just say that this competition, of course, is among four-year schools as well as other schools all around the country. And you just continue to represent this college in exemplary manner and distinguish yourselves among the best in the nation. Thank you very much. And if you would, share the names, that'd be great.
Yes. Some of my students who are here: Alicia Chow, Erin Swift, Joe Gideon. I don't think they can see. Donald Ross, Caitlin Pratt, Jeffrey Redmond, who's now the student body president, Linda Makuh, and Marie.
Do you have an last name?
Horvath.
Again, thank all of you for coming to our meeting tonight. It's been outstanding watching your work. They recently had over, how many were there? 250, 300 high school students?
300.
300 high school students were on our campus, and they led them in a Model United Nations here. So their work has helped our college in many ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Does that completes your report? Student Senate report. Mr. Rogers.
Good evening. I'd like to begin my report, last report here to the Board of Trustees, by saying that, well, I had my speech approved to say that the time you've spent paying attention to Student Senate has been appreciated, but that's definitely an understatement. I want you to know that I have looked forward to my reports for the months that I've been here. And I do appreciate your involvement with me, but also, as I got more invested in the student body, I really took to heart what you do for them, and I appreciate that as well. So, thank you. This Monday, May 5th, did mark Student Senate's final meeting for the 2013-2014 school year. We ended with a strong Student Senate of 21 members and a promising Executive Board elect, which Alicia Chow and Jeffrey Redmond, you just met them, they were two other members that I was not able to introduce to you last month. And we also had a highly successful presence during the campus craze yesterday. At some point, you should ask Jeff about how he liked the Dunk Tank that we had. That went over pretty well. So, in the last few weeks, we were able to grant one more funding request for the Student Kansas Association of Interpreters, and we finalized bylaws for all the Student Senate Standing Committees. During this week, members of the incoming Executive Board have been meeting with the current officers to get necessary information as well as tips and suggestions to better understand their roles for next year. I would like to thank you again for taking interest in Student Senate, and I am excited for next year's students and wish you all the best of luck. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
I would just like to say, Elliot, that, and for the benefit of the trustees and the listening audience, I had a chance to be at the athletic awards ceremony recently, and you were there and spoke, and I really appreciate how you represented the student body and appreciating the work that all of those students did on the athletic team. That was kind of above and beyond and took some extra time, but another example of how you have engaged all components of the student population on campus, and we sincerely appreciate that.
Trustee Cook, if I may, I'd like to commend Elliot as well for his leadership. His visibility around campus was amazing. He seemed to be everywhere. Could be because he also had a life-size cutout of him that, that one time, I actually saw him carrying it around. But Elliot seemed to be the ideal student leader, and we want to thank you for that. And I've enjoyed speaking with you and working with you throughout the year. So, thank you.
I'll tell you, that cardboard cutout, right now, it's sitting outside of my former math professor's office, waiting for her to get to work tomorrow morning. So, it doesn't get around.
Elliot, thanks, and I wish you the very best.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. College lobbyist report. Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will keep my comments as brief as Mr. Rogers', and I would assume that after I'm done, applause would be appropriate there as well.
Standing.
Standing. The legislature adjourned signee die this past Saturday at about 2:30 a.m., and you would think that we might be rested and ready to go, but the very next day, we were still working, and many legislators were doing legislative town halls, and that will continue in some communities across the state for the next week or so, as legislators sort of figure out just exactly how we ended the session and report to their constituents on the things that have passed, and as they prepare for the signee die session, which will be May 30th later on this month. And I'll talk about that briefly in just a moment. This was one of the shortest sessions in probably the past 40 years, 79 days, to be a little bit more precise. It's also one of the shortest veto sessions that we've seen in recent years, in fact, in memorable history. And that is due in large part to probably a number of factors, but this is an election year, and it gives the opportunity for legislators to go home and begin preparing their campaigns. Campaign season will officially open after May 30th, after the legislature gavels out signee die, but there's a lot of work that will be done in the meantime, and there's going to be some interesting changes, I think, in the face of the legislature as we prepare for 2015. The big issues, and again, I'm only going to report on the things that passed. We just met a few weeks ago around this table, and pretty much the things that I said had to be done were the things that the legislature took up and completed in the two and a half days that they were in Topeka. The budget was one of the big ones. They passed about a $14.6 billion budget when you take into account all funds that are present. And that budget really went through with little or no discussion. And I think that's one of the things that's being discussed right now. I've attached a piece to the back of the report by Martin Haver, who writes for his own newsletter, The Haver Capital Report. He also writes for columns across the state and papers that pick up his column. Rarely do I see him opine as strongly as he did in this particular piece, where he talks about the fact that the way the budget was passed was not representative of the people. And he essentially calls out the fact that the budget was passed by two members in the Senate and two members in the House. I should say, it was worked by two members in the House and two members in the Senate. It's an interesting opinion piece. It's an interesting article that I would encourage you to read when you have a moment, but it is part and parcel to the conversation that we had last time I was before you about the way we've been dealing with policy matters and conference committee reports and developing things with small groups of people, rather than the issues moving through the committee process, through their respective body, moving across and starting over. The other interesting things that are attached to the back of this report are an opinion piece by a law professor at KU. I would encourage you to read it. He talks about the shift of generally conservative and responsible governance to governance by ideology. It's an interesting piece, and I thought it was worth including in the report for your review. And then finally, the Kansas Watchdog Blog also has a writer that is in Topeka on a regular basis during a legislative session. And I think that the piece that I attached there talks a little bit about the split in the legislature as it relates to local control, and I would encourage your review of that particular article as well. The big piece that passed, and one that could potentially have an impact on the college, as it relates to some of the legislation in the final days of the veto session, was the tax pieces. There was a very large, or we could call it a mega conference committee report, where six or seven issues were placed into a report and passed as part of the tax policy. Not a lot of concern on a number of them. After four years, there was an agreement or a piece moved forward as it relates to machinery and equipment, and how real property versus personal property is determined. The real, simple issue is they codified in-state law the property valuation guide that is already in place at the Department of Revenue, and it has a three-prong test. There's a few other things that were included in that conference committee report. I would just draw your attention to a couple of others. One is the phase-out of the mortgage registration fee. With the passage of that particular piece, county governments across the state will likely see about half of the revenue that is currently generated by that particular mortgage registration fee. It's a five-year phase-out. The registration fees go down, but the cost for copies, which are required for many of the proceedings, go up. And chances are likely, and this is why it concerns this particular body, chances are likely that in many, in many local governments, in county governments across the state, those shortages will be made up by an increase in the mill levy or increase in property tax. That will be just to maintain the status quo. That's not for improvements or additional projects or new initiatives. That's just to maintain their current level. The other important piece, I think, that is worth calling attention to, just because of the notoriety that it received in the press, is the piece related to the for-profit health clubs. There was a particular group that sought to see a property tax exemption for the large-scale for-profit health clubs. They used the YMCA's and compared themselves also to the community centers operated by local units of government across the state, and lobbied heavily, extensively. That issue did not pass in the final analysis. That could have been another hit on county budgets at the local level that would have required some level of makeup in some form or fashion. The other piece that I think is of interest to us, and there's no change since the last time I was before you, but it's, again, worth noting in the final analysis of things that did or did not happen, and that is there is no change to the local unit of government election laws. As you're aware, there was a hard press to move those elections to the fall. They will remain in the spring for now, so, but I do believe that there will be a continued press to move those local elections to the fall. The goal is for the fall of odd, even-numbered years and make them partisan. We'll just see how that plays out in future legislatures. No real change to the education budget. The budget that passed last month before the legislature went home included the pieces for higher education and for K-12. That meant that there was no GoPro and no Success Act pieces contained in the finance bill. The bill did allow for some institutions to receive dollars for GED certificates if a student is enrolled in a CTE program. That does not apply to Johnson County Community College. We were not part of that particular piece of legislation. The other good news is, and this stands as well, is that the 1.5% cuts were restored to community colleges or to higher education, and that is indeed good news. I probably won't talk about the other, just small items that are listed on the report. I'll let you take a look at them, because there is no change since April, and those items have been signed into law by the governor. But I would indicate that election season opens essentially on May 30th. And as public servants, public officials, you'll probably be asked to meet with different folks. You may be asked for endorsements. Certainly, the fundraising starts in earnest for people that do what I do, and I usually keep a shoebox that has all of the requests that get quite thick between May 30th and August 7th, or whatever the first Tuesday in August is, and then we start over again between the primary and the general election. The couple of things to note this year, I do believe that we'll see some interesting filings by June 1, which is the filing deadline. We know for certain that there are some Johnson County incumbents that already have a primary. There are many that are certain to get a general election contest as well. But I firmly believe that because of the way redistricting occurred in 2012, the short amount of time that people had to make a determination of whether or not they wanted to run for office, figuring out where those legislative boundaries were, that limited the field, if you will, the field of contestants. People have had a chance to review what's been going on over the past couple of years. Some people have been paying attention to decisions that have been made regarding schools and school finance. And so I think that you're going to see an interesting field of candidates filing for office by June 1. We're going to see some retirements as well. Some have already been made. There may be another announcement or two. But there will be some interesting things to report on this summer, is what I'm telling you, and that will be some of the contents of reports that I'll be providing in June and July. So let me stop there, Mr. Chairman, and see if there are any questions or...
Questions or comments from the trustees. Trustee Stewart.
You mentioned in your report that there really were four people that drew up the budget, two from the Senate, two from the House. Who were those?
That would be the appropriations chair and vice chair, and the Senate Ways and Means Chair and Vice Chair. The budget process typically is worked through a series of subcommittee hearings, reports out to the full committee, the full committee working it, and then the full legislature voting, the full House or the full Senate voting on their particular pieces. And it was a much abbreviated scenario this year, where in the final analysis, those four people ran what is called, in a report that is called, an agree to disagree, which means you do not need the Democrat signatures on the report. Typically, you would need six to true-up a report. They only needed four.
And I'm not familiar with who those are. I assume our lobbyist would know who those people, those names are.
The college lobbyist?
Yeah, I think the college lobbyist should know. Who's the chair of the appropriations?
He does know. Would you like to know right now?
I would like to know that.
Let's see. Here you are putting me on the spot. It's Senator Ty Masterson, and the vice chair is Jim Denning. And then in the House, we had a change mid-session. The House Chair is Gene Solentrop, and the vice chair is Marvin Kleb.
Kleb, Marvin, okay. Thank you.
Trustee Sharp.
I would just add that the primary election is August 5th. Mr. Carter?
Thank you.
August 5th. 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., August 5th.
Other questions or comments? Trustee Drummond.
Mr. Carter, do you see that next year's budget will be run the same way, or do you sense there'll be pushback?
Well, I think that there's going to be problems with next year's budget. One of the things that I didn't go into detail about, but it is included in my report, is last month, when I was presenting to you, at 5:00 p.m. that afternoon, the consensus revenue estimates came out, painting a fairly rosy picture for state revenues over the next several years. Not inflated necessarily, not going up, but relatively flat and not problematic. Just this past week, news came down of the $93 million shortfall from personal income tax, individual income tax filings. It wasn't to be completely unexpected, given the legislation that was passed a few years ago, but that is the reality. We saw some one-time money come into the Department of Revenue in February that we won't likely see next year from some tax settlement issues. Who knows what the court is going to say by July 1 about the adequacy piece for school finance. So, I don't, we're going to have a completely different picture next year, and it's difficult to say how that will work, but I certainly hope it works the way the process is intended to work.
Trustee Musil.
Well, we talk about meeting projections. The projections are the Legislative Research Services' estimates based on existing state law on revenue and expenses, right?
There are other people that are part of that estimating group, but yes.
Right. But it is a consensus estimating group that looks at existing law and tries to determine from the economic forecast what it's going to be in future periods of time. And that, those people estimated at the time of the enactment of the tax bill a very dramatic crossing of the line, if you will, from surplus to deficits for, what, fiscal year 2017?
It was previously thought to be out in the out-years of '17 and '18, yes.
And now?
Now, I think it's anybody's guess. We're going to have to see what the revenues look like in the September-October filing period, when the late filers file. And then we'll have to see what the expenditures come in as well. This particular year, we had an increase in the Department of Corrections. We also had the governor backfilled, I think it was around $11 million, for the career in tech ed piece that was in the current year, because it was such a popular program. Those are expenditures that you don't always anticipate. So, it's a lot of moving pieces, Trustee Musil, as you're fully aware, that will determine where we're at.
I guess my point is, absent revenue forecasts that dramatically beat the projections, in two or three years, we either have to raise more revenue or make more dramatic cuts to state spending to achieve a balanced budget.
That would seem to be the case.
And I did, I told the chair I wanted to ask you, the most junior member of the House Committee on the Journal, but I won't.
Other trustee, Trustee Stewart.
Yeah. On the property tax, where the cement plants are now considered personal property, that was going to have a big impact to Johnson County, is what Paul Welcome, our appraiser, had said early on. But they were also talking about other entities, like refineries, and did they just include the cement plants? Did they not include refineries?
There's really kind of two pieces to that, two answers to that question. The first is that the major impact is going to be felt in Neosho County, where those two particular plants are located. I think that when the legislation was originally proposed two or three years ago, there was a, there is a major concern about what might happen should things like doorknobs or hand railings be classified as personal property versus real property. I mean, that was the argument, was determining where that's at. I think that the answer lies in the fact that by using the three-prong test included in the property valuation guide as part of the Department of Revenue, we solve a lot of those problems. There are still some cases, and what happens when you pass legislation that benefits a specific business. There's going to be a line forming at the door next year when the legislature reconvenes. Me too.
Other comments. Dr. Sobchak.
As trustees know, this has been, it was a pretty exciting year in the legislature. It was especially so for our school. We were extremely engaged, primarily thanks to GoPro. And I'd like to thank Mr. Carter for his counsel and guidance during the session. It was very much appreciated. We had a lot of early morning, late night types of phone calls, and his input was highly regarded and very much respected. So, thanks, Dick.
Mr. Carter, thank you. Travel safely.
Do we applaud now?
Committee reports, recommendations, management report, Trustee Stewart.
All right. We have a few items here to bring forward. The management committee met at 8:00 a.m. on Thursday, May 1, and you can see the minutes in the board packet beginning on page 1. They run through page 16. First item was we, following the board budget workshop last month, staff prepared another revenue scenario for review at the management committee. And you'll recall that next year's ad valorem tax revenue was based on a 5% assumed increase in assessed value in the county. And it looks like it's likely that that assessed value will come in higher than that. So, management committee reviewed another budget projection based upon a 5.5% assessed valuation increase and a 1/10 of a mill rollback in our mill levy. So, we would be going from 9.551 mills to 9.451 mills. And just remind, each mill raises about $8 million, so a tenth of a mill's $800,000. Well, we know for certain now that the state led, the state has held us harmless, and in the original expectations, we thought we were going to have a decrease in our state funding of 1.5%. They restored that, and that's worth about $300,000. So, we're ahead $300,000 before we adjust the mill levy. So, it's a negative, a net $500,000 decrease in tax revenue coming to the college. But it's likely that that mill levy, or the assessed valuation, will even hit a little higher than 5.5%. So, administration might have been pushed on this a little bit, but they think that they can... they think that they can make this work with a 1/10 of a mill reduction. And you'll see that on pages, I think, 1 and 2 of your board packet, if I'm looking at the right numbers on my pages here. So it is the recommendation of the management committee that the board of trustees approve the fiscal year 2014-15 management budget, subject to adjustments required when the final beginning balances and assessed valuation amounts have been determined. And I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? While you're thinking of such, remind me again when the final assessed valuations, is that, is that, when are they determined? Is that in August?
October usually is the final.
October.
But Mr. Perkins can give us the official answer.
We'll get a report in June.
You went through this last month and the timeline, and...
We have a number of timelines.
But I'm getting old and I forgot. But I, if you'd just kind of go through that again, Don, and what, I think what I'm leading up to in the question is, what parameters do we have if the assessed valuation doesn't come in at that particular level? I know we finally set the mill levy later, but go ahead.
We'll get information from the county near the end of the month of June, and we'll have that information to work with for building the legal budget. We will receive a final adjustment to that in October, usually it's in October, from the county. But that will be a very minor change as they adjust assessed valuation a little bit between those periods of time. So we're going to find out at the end of June.
Thank you. Any other questions while Don's at, while Don's at the podium? Trustee Musil?
I would just point out, when you look back at this budget worksheet and the data we asked the Don and the administration to build on, we initially had a 2% assessed valuation increase in there. So we are blessed that the economy is turning around and looking at maybe a 6% assessed value increase. And I think that is what I see as justification for then rolling back the mill levy. To some extent, we'll know more in June, finally, before we ever vote on a final legal budget in August. But I think, I think this is a, is a good step to take. It shows, we will, we're part of the economic development and the growth of the county, and we're going to use that money for some very important priorities for next year. But we're also going to be careful with that money and demonstrate that we're, we're going to turn some of it back to the taxpayer through a mill levy reduction. And I, I think it's a very reasonable budget guideline.
Trustee Cross?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just working to understand, so if the state restored 1.5% this year that they cut last year, is that correct?
No.
They proposed to cut.
They proposed to cut.
So we built the budget originally on losing 1.5% state funding.
But we didn't, because they held us harmless last year.
Which we found out this month.
And last year, too, correct?
I think they did last year, too.
So we're at the same funding level that we were two years ago?
Oh, we're probably slightly up, Trustee Cross, if we were to look at those numbers as far as state revenues go.
I was seriously trying to understand.
No. Historically, the fact is, the state revenues from the state have increased at a very, very slow rate, but they have gone up. They have not gone down. And so in this case, because they did the two-year budget, you know, they gave us a two-year budget plan. Year two was the negative 1.5. That's what we budgeted. Don, I'm going to put you on the spot. Last year, what was the projection on that? Was it a negative, or was it, it was flat? It was flat?
This year, this current year, flat.
Flat, right.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And last year?
Well, this year is the same as last year.
So we're at the same funding level from the state that we were two years ago?
That's right.
Correct.
Yeah.
Next year, we thought we were given a two-year budget, and next year was supposed to go down a percent and a half. So you're right, three years in a row, it will be the same.
That number stayed pretty constant for the last few years, about $21 million.
That's right.
So our increases in the assessed valuation in the county as well.
Lee, were you finished?
Yes.
Well, you raised a good point, and I think in regard to some of the issues that Mr. Carter shared with us, there are variables in Topeka that will occur between now and then. And the school funding still is out there to, until we get a final say from the Supreme Court that that's been blessed. So that's a great question. Trustee Stewart, did you have another comment?
No.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other comments or questions? Trustee Musil?
Well, we built this budget with a couple of things in mind. One was to get our capital budget, our capital outlay budget, back in a range we thought it should be. This five-year projection does it.
Over a five-year period. So the numbers that are part of these projections demonstrate that by year five, we get the numbers where we think they need to be, not just the capital line, the budget, also the reserve number as well.
That was my, my second point. I think the, the strategic points were, get the reserves at a level where they're sustainable, not too high, not too low, and get the capital budget to where we can actually have the opportunities to not only maintain what we have, but be prepared to take advantages of future capital needs.
And also, Trustee Musil, there's one other component to that.
The third strategic point I was going to make.
It's the capital outlay fund.
Right.
We want to be able to make sure that we, that we have the integrity of that fund where it's used for one-time major capital projects. So that's another part of the process as well.
As opposed to taking it out of the general fund budget?
Well, as opposed to using it to supplement items that perhaps, like, that should be funded out of the general fund budget.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Don. Trustee Stewart?
I just, I want to comment, you know, this is Don's last budget, unless we convince him to stay on. But he did a great job, and Barbara, fantastic job on working through these numbers and reworking the numbers after the last, after the board workshop. So thank you for doing that and, and making that happen very quickly, Barbara. But, so, and you're still invited to come back. We can grill you next year. All right. Next recommendation deals with masonry repairs on the campus. And one of the things, you know, we're talking about capital and, and what we want to, we want to make sure that our campus does not have a buildup of deferred maintenance, and that's part of that issue, is to make sure we have, we're allocating money to, to maintain our buildings and not get into a position where we have a huge amount of deferred maintenance. And I don't believe we do right now. And I know Rex Hayes is doing a good job staying on top of this. But, so here's one of the areas that we're working on is, there's constant repairs because of the weather and the hard winter, particularly in masonry repairs and roofing and things like that. But this one is masonry repairs for the comm, CSB, and GEB buildings. It's a recommendation of the management committee that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid of $723,300 from MTS Contracting, Inc., plus an additional $72,330 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen costs, for a total expenditure not to exceed $795,630 for campus masonry repairs. I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
One more recommendation, and that is on our West Park facility lease extension. That is a, as we ask a number of questions at the meeting, that is a very highly-used facility for us. I was hoping maybe someday we could consolidate down and have fewer of these, but it looks like that this one is, is being used quite...
Right.
Quite frequently and a very important location for us. So this recommendation has to do with extending that lease at the 87th Street in Overland Park, West Park Center. Existing third lease amendment will terminate on July 31 of this year. And this recommendation, the option to renew the existing three-year, three-lease agreements will be extended from August 1, 2014, through July 31, 2015, and the important part, with no increase in rent at an annual rate of about $238,642, about almost $20,000 a month for fiscal year 2014-15, plus commonary maintenance tax insurance fees effective at the commencement of the extension period. So it is the recommendation of management committee that the board of trustees accept the administration's recommendation to exercise a one-year lease extension for the West Park Center leases per agreement, subject to review by college council. I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. We have, we have a motion and a second. Thank you, Trustee Lindstrom. Any questions? Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The administration, just another comment, administration has done, I believe, a very good job of looking at our off-site satellite facilities, and we've actually downsized and cut some of the three locations, two locations that were no longer as effective as we think they need to be, and we can better allocate those resources. So I commend the administration for looking at that, hard at that. The management committee also reviewed several other reports. Summary bids between $25,000 and $100,000 is on page 3 in your board packet. Rex Hayes provided a monthly update on capital infrastructure projects, and that's on page 15 of the packet. Don Perkins provided a quarterly update on college investments in the Kansas Municipal Investment Pool. We also heard a report from administration on proceeding with emergency telephone installations in classrooms. And Denise Moore provided a monthly update on projects and information services, and some very important information on Internet Explorer. So, thank you, Denise. And that concludes my report.
Could you go into detail more on the Internet structure?
No, there was a, there was a, and she, Denise could tell you all about it, but there was a Internet, a virus that was invading Internet Explorer, and anybody that was using it was subject to this. She helped make sure that I knew it was going to be fixed.
Any questions of Trustee Stewart? Dr. Sopchik?
It's not about viruses.
I think with regard to the discussion of the budget, it's kind of amazing, it didn't seem that long ago that we were talking about projecting a negative 3% decline of valuations. Now we're talking about a 6% increase. That's a swing of almost 10 percentage points. It's pretty remarkable how this community is rallying economically at this time.
Yeah, I think we're going to continue to see that for a couple more years.
Very good, thank you. Trustee Lindstrom, learning quality.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Learning Quality Committee met at 8:00 AM this past Monday, May 5, 2014. The agenda for that meeting is on page 22 of your electronic board packet. As a reminder, the board packets went out last Friday. We had the meeting this coming, this past, this past Monday, so the minutes for that meeting did not make it into the board packet and therefore will be included in next month's packet. The meeting was directed by Dr. Andy Anderson, and there were three presentations. In the first presentation, Steve Hansen, Chair of Educational Affairs Committee, presented curriculum recently approved by his committee. I want to take a moment to thank Steve for his leadership and dedication to Johnson County Community College. He announced that he will be stepping down as Chair of Ed Affairs this year. Thank you, Steve. On the second report, I'm moving this around a little bit. On Dennis Day, Vice President for Student Success and Engagement, reviewed the proposed amendments for the Record Retention and Disposal Policy, 317 dot 00, the Student Organization Policy, 318 point 02, and the Student Trip Policy, 318 point 08. And that was, again, the recommendation to update these policies is in conjunction with the larger review of all college policies directed, directly affecting students and for the purposes of improving key performance indicators of student satisfaction. The recommendations generally serve to improve clarity and organization of student policies. And as a result, it is the recommendation of the Learning Quality Committee that the board of trustees accept the recommendations of the college administration to approve the proposed amendments to the following board policy sections, Student Record and Retention and Disposal Policy, 317 point 00, Student Organizations Policy, 318 point 02, and Student Trip/Travel Policy, 318 point 08. And I would make that recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And the third presentation was by Sherri Barrett, who's Director of Outcomes Assessment. She presented an overview of the Program Review in General Education Assessment Process. Program Review and General Education Assessments are two of the four AQUIP projects the college is currently working on that will have a positive effect on key performance indicators. As a reminder to the board, AQUIP is an acronym for Academic Quality Improvement Program, and it is one of several pathways leading to reaffirmation and accreditation of accreditation from the Higher Learning Commission, which is the body that accredits degree-granting post-secondary education institutions. And with that, I would like to ask Patrick to come up and briefly explain a little bit more about what went on during that presentation. Patrick?
Thank you, Trustee Lindstrom. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The importance of our accreditation or maintaining accreditation for Johnson County Community College can actually not be understated because without accreditation, our students here at Johnson County Community College are not eligible to receive federal financial aid. That is a significant part that the college then in turn receives as part of its revenues. And institutions that have lost this accreditation in the past have lost as much as 30% of their overall enrollment within one semester, which has had devastating effects on, on their institutions. City Colleges of Chicago is, is one of those examples. The Higher Learning Commission actually is more than just a, an approval stamp for us to receive federal financial aid. It is also, it also holds us to certain quality standards. And those quality standards have tightened over the years as the Higher Learning Commission has been under tight scrutiny from the U.S. Department of Education, which in turn accredits the Higher Learning Commission. And so to that effect, the Higher Learning Commission has really emphasized the importance of looking at outcomes and disclosing those outcomes to not only governing bodies, but also students. So one of the proposed changes that the Higher Learning Commission Board of Trustees will vote on in their upcoming session is actually to require all member institutions to post outcomes, so how many students graduate, for example, from a specific program, or how many students the, the program retains, on the website, on the college's website. So that is just one of many quality controls. Another good example would be to make sure that the institution is financially solvent, to make sure that we follow good or best practices in our governance and board policies, and so that there is a huge packet of, of federal compliance passed through the Higher Learning Commission that we have to oblige with. I particularly actually would like to thank Dr. Barrett. Dr. Barrett has taken on two of, four of those action projects that we are required to engage in as part of our accreditation that actually ensure that our programs are checked up for, for quality and to make sure that our students learn what we say they're learning. Those things cannot be understated again because they're a crucial part of the Higher Learning Commission's requisitions.
Any questions of Patrick?
Just a comment.
Trustee Cross?
Chair. Patrick, thank you for everything that you do, and to Dr. Sopchik and all our employees who have to go through an extensive and, I guess, rigorous compliance process. I know it's time-consuming, and bead by what we do, and I just want to thank you.
If I may, Trustee Cook.
Yeah, Dr. Sopchik.
Patrick, this is being driven by a federal agenda, correct?
Correct.
So, and actually the White House itself. And this ties in perhaps to this whole rating systems for universities and colleges. Can you maybe explain a little bit about where that's going?
Sure, absolutely. First of all, it's important to say that this is not a push that this particular administration has, has pursued into more accountability in higher education. This has gone on since the, goes, since the Bush administration, essentially. So it's not likely to go away anytime soon. The, the new federal rating system that you may have read about in the, in media will actually publicly show rate, or maybe even ranks, community colleges and other institutions against each other. And there is great debate on what those rankings will, will include, and that case has not been settled yet. We are actually fortunate enough to, to host an expert panel here at Johnson County Community College this June, and Acting Undersecretary Studley is actually going to be one of the panelists, and will have to discuss that issue of the ranking system with community college experts. Because a lot of times when those ranking systems and rating systems are put into place, they're put into place for the four-year institutions, and we have to comply with them as well. But they don't always fit community colleges.
Other questions? Trustee Lindstrom?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to note, and Patrick, please correct me if, if I'm inaccurate here, there are several higher educate, higher... here, there are several higher educate, higher learning commissions, and they're by region. Is that correct?
That is correct. They, they have, they all have different names. There's the Western Association for Schools and Colleges, for example. There's the Southern Association of Schools and Colleges. Yeah, there's quite a number.
And we are fortunate to have as a representative on this, this region, Sherri Barrett is a member of that commission. Is that correct?
Well, she is. Sherri Barrett is one of the Higher Learning Commission's peer reviewers. So Sherri, Sherri actually goes out to other institutions and evaluates them. So we are very fortunate to have her here because she knows a lot about accreditation.
Could she possibly come, could she possibly come and evaluate this, our school?
No.
No?
No. Maybe one thing to note as well, the Higher Learning Commission's Board of Trustees actually includes a former Kansas State Senator and former Regent, Christine Downey Schmidt.
Schmidt.
So that's, that's maybe one thing to mention as well.
She's a terrific lady, and I saw that she's also on the Board of Trustees. And I want to thank you and Sherri for your presentation at our Learning Quality Committee meeting. It was very informative for me, and most importantly, I want to thank Dr. Anderson, Andy, for coordinating that and making our meetings very informative for both trustee Cross and myself, and hopefully for the other trustees and the public as well. Thank you.
Trustee Musil.
Patrick, would you make sure to get that, that date out for that June panel as soon as possible, so we, so we can get it on our calendar, because that-
June 16th, 8 o'clock in the morning.
And it goes through the 19th, doesn't it?
Like Jimmy John's.
I think it's like a three-day conference. I appreciate getting the brochure from you.
Yeah.
And obviously, we appreciate all the hotel room nights that screen to generate, and we appreciate that very much.
I know it's in your strategic plan.
Thank you, Patrick, and trustee Lindstrom.
Well, I would welcome any other comments, if there are any, from any others who are in attendance at that committee meeting. And if not, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Other questions? Thank you very much. Human Resources, trustee Drummond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As trustee Lindstrom said, our meeting met on Monday, so you will find no minutes in the packet, but they will appear next time around. We met at 9:30 Monday morning, the 5th. Trustee Sharp and myself represented the trustees. The first item on our agenda was an update of the Performance Management System process, which I referenced last, in our last meeting. Other topics that we had included a discussion about salary increases for senior leadership staff, which will be a combination of-
Here we go. Yeah, good, thank you. Now I'm on. Salary increases for senior leadership staff, which will be based on a combination of cost of living and merit, beginning in fiscal year 16. Increases for other staff that will follow that same process, beginning in fiscal year 17. Faculty increases will continue to follow the negotiated agreement that we have. Probationary employees will receive their initial increase upon successful completion of their designated probationary period. The process of restructuring the performance appraisal system is underway and making really good progress. And appraisals will be rewritten right now with new measurable performance criteria. And once we're fully implemented, the non-bargaining unit employees will complete a self-appraisal in December. Supervisor will conduct, conduct formal performance reviews with employees between January and March, and merit increases as recommended will be part of the process of going effect in July 1st. So this is a process we're working through diligently and completely, and will be fully implemented somewhere in the next couple of years as we fine-tune all these processes. The second item on the agenda was a report on the results of recently conducted dependent eligibility audit. This was checking the number of dependents that should or should not be on our insurance. And the audit revealed no significant issues with the dependents enrolled in our plan. Out of 1,800 members audited, 96% passed the audit test. The remaining 4%, most involved dependents who had just turned 26th and would be dropping off the plan very shortly. So it was a very good audit, showed very good results, and we're happy that that set up that way. So that concluded our meeting. Be glad to take any questions or clarifications.
Questions or comments for trustee Drummond? Trustee Musil.
My, my recollection is there was some angst among our college community that we were doing such a survey and suggesting that people were not following the rules with respect to dependents. And I, I just want to think, I think it's a fiduciary duty of this board to make sure that those types of things are followed, and we're not trying to get you. And it's like everything else in life, it's a few people who may not follow the rules that require all the rest of us to do audits and checks. So, for the campus community that was surveyed and felt like we were somehow intruding into their lives, I apologize for that, but I think it's something that we have to do, particularly given industry information, which frankly shows we are doing a very good job, and we have employees that are being honest and truthful and accurate. So, in that sense, we confirmed what we probably already knew, but I think going through the exercise was important.
It's important for us to have due diligence throughout the college, and this is just one piece of all the different parts of due diligence that we do. And fortunately, as you said, trustee Musil, we came out on top again. That concludes my report unless there are other questions.
Other questions? Thank you, trustee Drummond.
You.
Next item is the audit report, and as we build on the due diligence, we did have an audit report. I'd like to defer to Mr. Musil to give that report.
Well, the Audit Committee met Wednesday morning, yesterday, at 8:00 AM for about two hours again. And I, I think maybe we ought to tell everybody, we moved the board meeting up this month because of graduation, which is why all the committees met just in the last week, and we don't have minutes. But the Audit Committee met, we, we have one recommendation that requires action this evening. We talked about it at a prior board meeting about extending the, the audit contract with McGladrey-Pullin for one more year before we go out for RFPs to see about who our audit team will be in future years. But we had previously agreed and believe that it is in the best interest of the college to use McGladrey-Pullin for one more year. So, it is a recommendation of the Audit Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the college administration's recommendation to renew the contract for the annual financial audit services for the college's fiscal year ending June 30th, 2014, with McGladrey and Pullin LLP at an amount not to exceed $77,950, and I would so move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
The Audit Committee, this is my first year on it, it covers a lot of ground about what Janelle Vogler and everybody really in the administration and the college community try to do to make sure that we're spending our money right, that we're watching where the money goes, how it's spent, monitoring employees. And we did a lot of that, went through a lot of that yesterday on, on audit on payment process segregation of duties, so that the person that gets the check and the person that processes the check and the person that delivers the check to the bank are different people and are monitored differently to make sure that's done correctly. An audit will start on the accounts payable system. We've been doing an audit with great help from the Information Services Department on our firewall audits and how we protect our technology from, from external threats. We did, we reviewed two matrix, two matrices on audits that had previously been done and had recommendations to see where those recommendations were in the process, and, and there was much progress in all of those, and they're all on, on task. We always review the Ethics Report Line to determine what kind of reports were received from our anonymous, if you choose, report line about ethics issues or concerns about members of the college community. And there were five received between January 28th and August and April 29th. All of those have been addressed. We also received a report on the Behavioral Intervention Team, where we are trying to make sure that we head off issues and recognize issues with students or with faculty or staff before they become a problem. And we looked at additional audit reviews that the Audit Department has ongoing. All of those are in progress and seem to be proceeding apace.
I would just add that, again, building upon trustee Drummond's due diligence, this is a big campus, and we have a lot of departments. And as we try and work on a culture of uniformity, and, and making sure that we are consistent in our practices, sometimes that's a change in culture, where we've had maybe more independence by some departments than, than we are moving forward. So, as we change that culture, it's, it's, it's all for the purpose of being as efficient as we can, as transparent as we can, but at the same time, to make sure we're operating according to all of the statutes, rules, and laws that we need to operate by. And so, I just really want to thank, sitting in an Audit Committee meeting for over two hours, all the work that goes in by a large number of people representing their responsibilities. And it's, it's, I would just say to the trustees, it's very assuring, assuring to know the leadership from our administration and each of those people, the seriousness they're taking to make sure that we are operating, Bob, as you indicated, with, with really true diligence.
The other point that we might make is when, when audit comes in, I joked with Janelle that they're kind of like internal affairs on any of the police movies you've seen, and nobody wants to see audit at your door. But as a general rule, I've been very pleased to see that the, the community, the department, the, the division, the unit, whatever that they're looking at, has responded favorably and cooperatively with Janelle and her team so that we can get the data out. And, and it's, it's important that we do that. And I think they've uncovered things that weren't bad practices, we can just improve on them, and that's, so I applaud that if they come into your office or whatever and you cooperate with them, that is the first step in making sure we have a campus that's working right.
The other, the other point I would make, to follow up on the ethics reports, and I knocked on wood then, and I'll knock on wood now, but as we look at trends from back several years when we started tracking these reports, we're trending at a very positive rate in a number of different categories. And so, again, I want to commend the administration and all of the staff. I would like to think we're creating a culture where we're having fewer and fewer complaints by students and/or faculty in a whole list of areas that they can choose to file a, file an ethics complaint. So, again, congratulations. But again, the season's young, as we say with the Kansas City Royals, and we've got a lot of games yet to play, so we have a long time yet to go. Collegial, any questions of trustee Musil on the audit report? Thank you, Greg. Collegial Steering Committee did meet on April 29th at 3:00 PM. We, it's an amazing hour. We have a lot of agenda items, but the time goes by so quickly that we usually spend a lot of time on the first two or three items. And in the past, we had, had the adjunct discussion on the table, and that always got kind of pushed off. So we spent most of our time at Collegial Steering, this session, talking about the adjunct positions. What's the proper ratio? What are the issues with adjuncts? Lori Paldino did a wonderful job in presenting the case of history in terms of where we are with adjuncts. And like in anything we do, communication can be clear. We have adjuncts that would like to be more involved. We have adjuncts that come and go on the campus at different hours of the time. I want to commend Dr. Sobchak and team for putting together a Saturday workshop for orientation, to try and reach out to those adjuncts that were only available on Saturday. And so, again, with, I think the Faculty Association, the Faculty Senate, all committed to saying, how can we best work with adjuncts and make them a part of the campus? And so, we're reviewing a number of things. We're looking at some different data to try and make, make, as, make our operation as efficient as possible, at the same time, have adjuncts feel like they're a part of this, this large family. We talked a little bit about reading readiness. That issue has come up in the past, and that will continue to have worked throughout the summertime. Enrollment strategies, we reported last time that we have a large group of people that are very interested. We have faculty that are taking leadership with students to recruit. We are finding that our recruiting efforts probably aren't as ambitious as other colleges that have full-time recruiters. I know the administration is well as looking at strategies to more effectively recruit students to this campus, whether that be through social media, whether that be through billboards, whether that be through word of mouth, but very healthy discussion. We are moving into a new graduation ceremony, as you know, and I'd remind you that I believe that's a week from tomorrow. We'll have a session in the afternoon and a session in the evening. So we're working through some cultural shift with, with that process, and who attends and when, and so on and so forth. We talked a little bit about the new Ohio Performance-Based Funding, Regent's Social Media Policy that, that has come out, and then we had a little discussion about our reaction to the elimination of due process for K through 12 teachers. And again, the hour flies by. I'm sure Dr. Williams may have a comment about that in her report, but we really feel that they're productive, and I would defer to trustee Musil if he has additional comments.
No other comments. I just, on the graduation, Dr. Cook is our speaker, and he has promised two different speeches, so you have to stay awake at the 7:30 ceremony, and can't just rely on what you heard at the 4 o'clock ceremony. Is that right?
In further deliberation about that particular topic, the administration has advised me that because if I do two, I might forget and do both at the same time, and they'd get too long, and so I've been told-
Do one?
I've, I've been told to follow a strict timeline of 47 minutes. So we'll, we'll do the best we can.
Could we do like the, could we do like the athletic awards and tape that?
Yeah. Any other questions of Collegial Steering?
Okay, thank you. President's Recommendations, trustee Lindstrom, Treasurers' Report.
Mr. Chairman, I'm pleased to present the Treasurers' Report for the month ending March 31st, 2014, which can be found on pages 25 to 36 in your board packets. Briefly, here are a few highlights. Ad velorem tax distributions of $2 million were received in March and distributed in the General Fund, Special Assessment Fund, and the Capital Outlay Fund. On page 35, at the bottom of the page, please note the fund cash balances. At March 31st, we had a book balance of $85.5 million, with a $16.6 million in outstanding encumbrances, leaving us with an unencumbered balance of $68.9 million. The college made nine of 20 semi-annual payments on the Series 2009 Certificates of Participation. Expenditures in the Primary Operating Fund were within approved budgetary limits, and it is the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurers' Report for the month ending March 31st, 2014, subject to audit, and I would make that move, motion.
We have a motion, and, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Dr. Sobchak.
Thank you, trustee Cook. We're going to start tonight's President's Report with lightning round. Mr. Anderson, can you go first, please?
You're testing me to see if I don't use all the time this week. Challenge. I wanted this week to draw attention to a program, our Engage Service Learning Program. It doesn't get a lot of attention, but the, it illustrates the sort of students that will be graduating and going out in the community. Those students that complete the Civic Honors, and you'll see them at the graduation ceremonies, there are three this year that are just absolutely outstanding. To get that award, the student must graduate with a certificate or degree, of course. They complete service learning projects. They complete skills training, where they might learn to do such things as grant writing, conflict resolution, volunteer management. They must demonstrate leadership development through campus or community organizations. They observe community decision-making bodies. They spend at least 75 hours of community service with a not-for-profit community partner. And they do a final presentation in which they display the Civic Honors activity reflecting on, on what they've learned in that experience. There are three students that I just wanted to name, and again, Mary Alice Coulter, whom we've seen over and over again, and that's why we see her name appear so often, is because she's doing all of these things. And she made a comment, I wanted to share these. "I joined the Civic Honors Program after taking leadership and civic engagement because I already knew how important service was in my life. Now I volunteered over 300 hours at Wayside Waft's Animal Shelter since 2012. Civic Honors was the catalyst that motivated me, taught me, inspired me, and informed me in not only the importance of the service of a single person, but also in the abilities of strong leaders and the growth that service brings to an individual." Brittany Espinoza, who is from Parker, she did, she did her, her leadership work with Parker Elementary School in Kansas City, Missouri. She comments that Civic Honors allowed her hands-on experience with two great passions, teaching and encouraging. "I was able to gain insight and experience in the urban core and work with at-risk populations." And Megan Gladback, also competing Associate of Liberal Arts, and her community partner that she worked with was bridging the gap at Bishop Miege High School in Jerusalem Farm. She makes the comment, "What's awesome about Civic Honors is that it really helps you figure out who you are, what you like, what you don't like, what your morals and values are. In a classroom setting, you just don't have the opportunity to learn that stuff about yourself. You need to-" stuff about yourself. You need to go out into the real world and actually experience life to discover who you are." Those three students will be receiving the Civic Honors Award, and they represent the kinds of students that will be graduating from our institution and going out into the community, and it's, I'm proud to introduce them to you.
That's great. Thank you. Thank you, Andy. Barbara?
Yes, last month, Andy Anderson talked about the excitement at the end of the semester with all of, with the commencement activities, and I remain so impressed by how the various components of the college come together here to make things happen. And as an example, last week, Rex Hayes gave me this document, which contains the setup instructions for the 14 graduation ceremonies that are taking place this month. Many of them are own commencement activities, and many of them are regional high schools that are coming here to have their ceremonies. And each one has different setup instructions. Campus services staff has, is very busy behind the scenes, the housekeeping staff, the various trades, to make these activities go smoothly so that students and their families can enjoy them. And I just want to commend Rex and his staff for the pride they take in their work and how they represent JCCC.
Thanks, Barbara. Everyone knows that this time of the year, the grounds look the best. They look all year around. Everyone here really steps up and gets this campus ready for all the graduation ceremonies that we have. Dr. Day?
On November, or April 23rd, at 9:00 PM, we threw an event, and nobody came. And it was designed to do that. We opened up fall enrollment at that time. Normally, we would open up at 8:00 AM in the morning and have a line of people, and the phones would be full, and we would shut down the system, and computers would get clogged up. To try to change that culture, and to try to let students get into classes so they didn't skip classes that day, we said, "Let's try it at 9 o'clock PM, and we're not going to show up either." So we just flipped the switch, allowed them to come on, and over 2,400, about 2,400 students inside of an hour and a half enrolled in classes. It's pretty remarkable. If we bring a consultant in from IBM, they'll tell you that there's a 98/2 rule. 90% should be electronically proficient, 8% get a lot of help, 2% need a whole lot of help. We had 44 calls, that was it, to our help desk, manned by Information Services that evening. Over 2,000 people enrolled successfully. They were prepared, they were ready to go, and they got in. It's a remarkable event. The registrar, Enrollment Services, and Information Services put it all together, and it really was beautiful. When 100% of those folks can get through the system without any glitches and get into it. Now, here's the most remarkable part. The next morning, two people were in line. That was it. Which is, in my world, that's magnificent. So, wanted to share that with you. It was a pretty remarkable event. We're going to write up an article and send it to some trades, because it is unusual.
I wish we would have had 2,000 people in line the next morning.
Many of us would have wished that, too.
Dennis, one quick little thing. Earlier, Patrick mentioned the June 16th Benchmarking Conference, and a visitor there, for that conference, is going to be a Mr. Ji-Hong Lee from the AACCT, who's going to be here specifically to talk about financial aid issues. You know, trustee Musil brought up the fact that perhaps it could be an interesting conference to attend. Could you just give us a brief insight into Mr. Lee?
Yeah, he's doing a listening tour for AACCT about the rating system itself, the proposals. Just a real recap, what's being proposed right now by the presidential administration. There are three tiers that they're looking at, and in 2015, they're going to draw the line in the sand for all the institutions, higher education institutions, and we're going to look at metrics. And for three years, they're going to say to us, "Do the best you can in these metric areas," and then in 2018, we're going to tell you how much money is going to be tagged to that. Not only in federal financial aid, but with bonus money as well, to help with systems. So some of us will prove ourselves, some of us will lose out, and some folks, it won't be an effect at all. But it's going to be a fascinating process that is going to happen, and they're still, as Patrick said, they're still having hearings on this rating system. There's a lot of conversation about it, and this is part of the tour that our organizations are having, so that they can have input on that system as well. And having the acting undersecretary of Education here at the same time, perfect, perfect timing.
Any questions?
Well, that makes it so critical to know what the metrics are going to be, and to make sure they fit community colleges. And community colleges aren't a monolith either, if we just look around the 19 that are in Kansas. So it'd be interesting to see what process they go through to differentiate colleges and what their actual measurements ought to be.
I think the visit will be part of the, our ability to help shape that conversation, I think. And that's why it's so important to have folks like this and have our input into it.
Yeah. Thanks, Dennis. That's great. You know, the last meeting was only three weeks ago, and Dr. Cook alluded to that. But during those three weeks, it's amazing, all the things that happened on this campus. And I'm going to take you through just a few of the highlights, some of the things that I experienced firsthand. On April 23rd, I was fortunate to attend a League for Innovation board meeting up at Kirkwood Community College in Cedar Rapids. As you know, at that time, we were informed that we passed the first level of our reformation process for league membership. That's very exciting. You need to know that the next board meeting is going to be September 17th. Prior to that, they will be coming here for a visit. I strongly urge all the trustees to be in attendance. That is an all-hands-on-deck, command performance type of event. We're now working out the date, and Terry will be working with you to find the time that best works for everyone. I would also like to commend Julie Haas and her staff for putting together the publication that got us through that first step. You've all seen it. It's masterfully done, and represents the college in the best way possible. On April 28th, I was super impressed by the members of our Student Senate. I attended a Student Senate meeting. The formality of the meeting, the Roberts Rules of Order, it was amazing. How the senators voted, the questions they asked, it was extremely professional. I have to say, there was never, there was not one unanimous vote. There was always some type of dissenting opinion, many times reserved, but it was a great experience. Elliot has done a terrific job of coordinating that and leading that organization. On April 29th, I was visited by Chris Morrow. Chris is the mayor of Gardner. He came by, and one of our main topics of conversation was that his son, Josh, was performing in The Cripple of Innishman, which is a student performance here on campus that is led by Beate Pettigrew, our professor in the Department of Music and Theater. Mayor Morrow was effusive in his praise of our college, of the program, and the production. It was absolutely thrilling to hear a father talk about their son performing in that play. On April 29th, Danny O'Neill dropped by, the owner of the Roastery. We discussed coffee and organizational management. As you know, the Bean Baron is a huge supporter of our college. He said if I read his name on TV, I could get a free cup of coffee at his new place down there on Southwest Boulevard.
Who was that?
Danny O'Neill, Danny O'Neill, Danny O'Neill.
April 30th, Andy Anderson and I met with Jim Hinson, the superintendent of Shawnee Mission School District. We discussed new and exciting ways that our college could work with Shawnee Mission to serve the students and families in that part of Johnson County. We are looking forward to a even stronger relationship and collaborating with them in the future. On April 30th, I also had the opportunity to visit with 10 of our nursing students as they perform their clinicals at Shawnee Mission Medical Hospital. Professor Colleen Dugan and the director, Karen La Martina, were there. They showed me around. I got to walk the cardiac floor with the students, with our students, and also spend some time with them in the break room discussing their experience here at our college. You know, our students there were dressed impeccably, and the quality of service was unbelievable. We were sitting in the break room, and one of those buzzers went off in the room across. I couldn't believe how fast one of those students got out of that chair and ran across all. I thought she was going to run through the glass door, you know, they always blast. It was, we should be so proud of our students and how they work in these hospitals. The same day, our Foundation Some Enchanted Evening Committee meeting was conducted in the Marriott. As you know, this group of volunteers, many of you have served on that committee, will generate at least half a million dollars for scholarships. You know, Mary Birch from Lathrop Gage is the event chair, and Brian Biggs from Metcalfe Bank is managing our corporate solicitations. On May 1st, I attended the outstanding student luncheon, when you and many of you were there, to hear their stories of overcoming adversity and how they've succeeded at our college is truly inspirational. Kudos to Pam Bassler for bringing that all together, and all the student service group for making that luncheon happen. It was very, very special. May 2nd, we had our JCCC Awards Luncheon. This is the one where staff and faculty are honored for their achievements during the year. We welcomed Dr. Dan Phelan, a former employee here at our college, who is now president of Jackson Community College in Jackson, Michigan. He did a terrific job with his address. It was about excellence. Also, it's terrific to recognize our colleagues across the campus for their achievements and their service to our students. Staff development under the direction of Karen Martley did a great job with this, and we'd like to congratulate all of the awardees for that luncheon. On May 2nd, I welcomed about 150 high school students from Gardner, Peola, Shawnee Mission East, who were here to see the mayor's son in The Cripple of Innishman. Beate Pettigrew said, "Hey, we're going to have these students over here, you should come over and meet them," and we did, and it was fantastic. On the same day, that night, I got to attend the Powwow. How many of you have been to our Powwow? Well, it was my first time. The Powwow is hosted by the American Indian Health Research and Education Alliance. There were over 200, and this is in the, in our gym, in the lower level, there were over 200 Native Americans beautifully outfitted in their native dress, competing in various Native American dances, and there were also free health screenings. It was an amazing scene to walk in there. You also had all kinds of little stands, things being sold. It was unreal. ARIA seeks to collaborate and partner with the American Indian Nations, communities, and organizations to improve the physical, mental, emotional, and spiritual well-being of American Indians throughout the United States through the quality participatory research and educational programs. Our very own Dr. Sean Daly oversees this program and does a terrific job. The next day, on Saturday, May 3rd, at 1:00, we had the CLEAR Certification Ceremony. CLEAR stands for College Learning Experiences, Activities, and Resources, and this provides non-credit continuing education classes for adults with mild developmental disabilities or other cognitive disabilities. Kathy Kennedy, our staff, of our staff, does an absolutely remarkable job in managing this program. Our own Dr. Jerry Cook gave the keynote address, and it was very special. I think this ceremony is one of the finest things that we do. On May 3rd, that very same Saturday, in fact, all kinds of things were happening on Saturday, our baseball team advanced to the NJCAA Region 6 Super Regional Tournament by sweeping Cloud County. We outscored the Thunderbirds 27 to 7, and now they're participating in the Super Regional in Wichita. The winner will advance to the World Series on May 24th in Grand Junction, Colorado. Congratulations to Ken Shelley for getting the team this far. That evening, the Cohen Community Series presented Tracy Lawrence in our Yardley Hall. It was a raucous, rockin' country and western concert. We would like to thank Christie McWard for bringing it all together, and also trustee Stewart for funding this enterprise through the endowment he created in Barton P. Cohen's name. It was really a lot of fun. On May 6th, Lyndy Robinson's retirement reception was held. I bring it up, not only to pay tribute to Lyndy, but also there was an incredible upgrade in the food served at that versus the normal cake and punch, that's the standard fare. This was exquisite, an exquisite retirement reception, deserving me so. Today, at lunch, the Overland Park Convention and Visitors Bureau conducted their annual Host Awards Ceremony. The event was emceed by Dr. Cook, as well as trustee Musil. I have to say, the trustee Musil provides a special brand of humor that delighted everyone in attendance. But most importantly, our college won an award for hosting the NJCAA's Women's National Basketball Tournament this past spring, as well as it was recognized that will be hosting this tournament in the years ahead. So Carl Heinrich was there to accept the award, and it was very exciting. All of these activities are representative of what happens, not just during these three weeks, but throughout the year on this campus. It's amazing the role that this college plays in our community, and how people look to this college to play that role. I think we should be very proud of not just our students, but the job our faculty does, the job our staff does, in bringing all these things together, and also, of course, the leadership that you provide as trustees. We can be very proud of Johnson County Community College. I think it was a pretty good year, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Sobchak. I would just make a comment about CLEAR, and I know that trustee Musil has addressed that group. We all have days that don't go the way we would like them to go, and we all have challenges and problems that come about. But it was very refreshing for me to spend a couple of hours with those folks Saturday afternoon. This is a program, and the certification recognizes attendees who have been coming throughout, was this for the semester or for the whole year? I think this was a semester certification, or was it the whole year?
Whole year.
Whole year? Well, that even makes it more profound, because they get their certificate if they've not missed more than two, two days, two times. And one young man has been coming since the program began in 1977, and he was proud to say, "I've been coming every year for 37 years." And what we learn from being around those folks is they sincerely appreciate what the college is doing, the opportunity, and while they have many challenging issues, wheelchair folks, having braces to hold their heads in place, they are so appreciative of the experience and so happy to be involved. And we would all do well to give that program some time, when we think we have it tough. So I appreciate all of the input, Dr. Sobchak. There are just a lot of activities going on on this campus, and people are benefiting every day from traditional and non-traditional experiences. Any questions of Dr. Sobchak? I do not believe we have any old business today. We have no new business today. So we'll go to reports from board liaisons. The first one is the KACCT, and I would report that we had an executive committee meeting on Monday, May 5th, I guess Monday this week. And we met in Hutchinson, at Hutchinson Community College, and we discussed some really kind of key issues. And the reason we wanted to come together, we usually have an executive committee meeting by phone once a month, but we thought it was time just to sit face-to-face and really basically talk about the future of KACT. We have 19 community colleges, as you know, and one of our discussion points was about the activity between Fort Scott Community College and Pittsburgh State University. There have been discussions of merger between those two and partnering. We think that was probably precipitated by Fort Scott to help offset expense and provide better delivery service by Pittsburgh State University. It's our understanding that those discussions have come to a halt, that they're at a stalemate right now. The second issue was Dodge City Community College partnering up with Hayes State, and that, we think, was maybe more precipitated by Hayes State than Dodge City Community College, but the same thing, try and combine resources to provide services to students. And we were a little concerned about that, because, you know, what is, is that the future? That we're forgetting the place of community colleges. And I know that we get asked several times, "When will this college become a four-year school?" And I don't think it's any of our intentions that that would ever happen. In our discussion, we talked about, "Let's just review what our purpose of a state association is, and what's the purpose of a community college?" And so we tried to identify three strengths of a state association as it relates to the community college. And probably the first item that we all talked about was the accessibility that community colleges provide for students at a cost-effective rate. And so when we talk about tuition rates compared to four-year schools, and we talk about how the ease of accessibility, even though there are times we talk about, "Are we as convenient to the students as we'd like to think we are?" And Dennis, I really appreciated the example you gave on the internet registration earlier tonight. Then, so we really, I think, agreed that there's a place for the community college and for strong community colleges, and that state association strong community colleges, and that state association really plays a role in supporting that statewide. We begin to look at, what are the three threats to the statewide association? And again, obviously, a number-one thing that popped up was the variance in assessed valuation that community colleges experience around the state. And Trustee Stewart reminded us that a mill in our community generates about $8 million. And a mill in some other community college generates about $70,000, maybe less. And so this issue of, how many mills do we need to have based upon our assessed valuation to generate revenue to support our colleges is a big variance across this state. And I believe we all need to understand that and be sensitive to it, and yet, at the same time, are the initiatives of the state helping all of us accomplish what it is we want to accomplish. And frankly, some of the colleges are really in a survival state, as they lose enrollment, as they lose assessed valuation, and yet trying to maintain their identity. So we had a very good day of discussion. It was a kind of a prelude to our next meeting in June, when we will be out in Scott City. And again, we would offer the opportunity for any of you to join us, to make that trek. We will, I think, elect new officers at that point and make our plans moving forward for the next year. Very good discussion, and very, very fruitful. Any questions about KACCT? The next item is the Johnson County Research Triangle. Mr. Musil had asked me to sit in on that session. Actually, two events happened in Mr. Musil's absence. The regular meeting was held on a Tuesday, and then the following Wednesday was the five-year anniversary celebration of J-Cert. So my remarks are going to kind of combine both. At the regular meeting, K-State, KU Edwards Campus, and the KU, or the KU Research Medical Center each gave their reports as to the past year, and they briefed the board on their programming for the upcoming year. And that tied in with the breakfast. Let me just kind of tie some things together. To date, greater than $50 million has been collected by J-Cert. You'll recall, it's the 1/8 cent sales tax. And, you know, some really significant things have occurred. Since April of 2009, K-State has added 62 additional jobs, KU Edwards 91 jobs, KU Clinical Center 71 jobs, and all of those are really related to either advanced degree work, at the case of KU Edwards Campus, and/or job-related activities that deal with bio-research in animal husbandry and in human health. And the whole idea is to improve the condition of animal health and human health. If you haven't had the chance to hear Dr. Jensen speak, he's really incredible, and he made the case at the breakfast, talking about that the nationwide trend around the country is really to increase research opportunities. And with J-Cert and the positioning of the clinical research lab, we are becoming a very prominent player nationwide, and in some cases internationally, in medical research for human beings. The NCI status was very significant, and there's another step that they're working on to advance, and I think Greg, he talks about 62 institutions around the country that are, have this certification. But then there's about 10 or 12 that, in the next level, that really are in a powerful, powerful position. Businesses are locating to Johnson County because of J-Cert. At the K-State Innovative Campus, that's kind of an incubator for new businesses, and one person gave testimony that they've been in the incubator now for a period of time, and they're ready to build their own building and will generate about 51 jobs. And so one, but one example of how a small company has started and is now going to locate in Johnson County. The academic research is terrific, growing very, very quickly. They are projecting that in two decades, J-Cert will have a $1.4 billion economic impact over the next 20 years for our area. K-State's added eight degree programs, 10 research labs. KU Edwards has given out a couple hundred thousand dollars in scholarships in 10 programs, and the KU Clinical Center has generated over 1,000 jobs in the area. And what's really significant is that the KU Medical Center is really working with hospitals throughout the state of Kansas, who do not have the resources for cancer research and/or treatment, and so this network has been created throughout the whole state. And it's just a really powerful, powerful movement that I think we can all be proud of. One of the things I walked out of there with is that both KU, and by the way, chancellors of both colleges were at the breakfast Wednesday morning, again applauding the efforts by the J-Cert movement and what it's done to their campuses. And the message in our Tuesday morning meeting was that all of the, both KU and K-State are really focused on workforce development, and we have some good partnerships with K-State and developing with KU as to what Johnson County Community College's role is in this workforce development. But tremendous opportunities, and I will say, Trustee Musil, they miss you sincerely. They really couldn't even begin to get their meeting going for about 20 minutes, realizing you were absent, but they adjusted, they adapted, and we carried on. But I would defer to you, because I've really taken your committee and your report, but the job well done, J-Cert still alive and well.
My reports were much shorter generally.
Okay, any questions on J-Cert? Wonderful, wonderful program. It positions us in a unique place in the nation. Dr. Williams, finally. Faculty Association.
Well, hello. It's a pleasure to be here again. I think I closed my report last week, or last month, by saying that we were having an officer election, and you'd know the results if I'm back. Well, I'm back, so I was re-elected. I'll just run through, we just really shuffled the deck a little. I was re-elected as president. Ron Palsick is now the vice president of the Faculty Association. Jim McWard remains our secretary. Jeanette Funero is our, I think she's our legacy six-year-running treasurer, and Andrea Broomfeld is our UNISER rep. And Jeff Anderson, of course, remains our past, immediate past president. So that's the lineup. The good news or the bad news is, I will be on Sabatical in the fall, and I was thinking about this when Elliot was giving his report. I have a solution. If I get one of those life-size cutouts, which in my case would be hobbit-sized, I could have Ron bring me to the meetings, and it'd be almost like being here. But anyway, I look forward to working with you, again, throughout the next year, certainly through the summer, and as much as needed, I can make myself available in the fall. I'll be at KU, so, and certainly back for the spring semester. I don't really have a whole lot of items on the agenda, but just to run through a couple, we have our upcoming, well, our last Faculty Association meeting of the semester will be next Tuesday, and again, everyone's welcome to attend. We just have a few wrap-up items on the agenda, but some of those wrap-up items are actually launching some very important things, like our cross-campus, we don't know what it'll really call it, committee discussion task force, but we anticipate there will be an ongoing discussion about our associates' degrees and also reading readiness, and a lot of the topics that came up throughout the year that were complex, we are revisiting and really seriously looking at ways to make informed decisions about how to move forward with those complex issues. So the FA meeting next Tuesday, May 13th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. in, we call it the Ice Cube, it's RC 270. I think you should have all received an email on my behalf by Terry that we are having our Faculty Association party next Thursday. We have the two graduations scheduled, and so our, we've made some adjustments to the meal, which will be available a little later than normal to accommodate the two graduation ceremonies, but you are also all welcome, as you know, to attend, and I hope to see all of you there, actually. I, myself, probably won't be able to get there until after the second ceremony, because I have a role in both, but that's cool. We have long parties, so we hope some of you or all of you can join us. It was really great to see the Model UN team here tonight. I know they have been the fodder for a lot of my comments in terms of great contributions by students and Professor Wright, and representing the college in such an important way, so it was really great to put some faces to the names that are constantly read with that group, and so it was great to see them here tonight. Collegial steering, there was an invitation to talk about or make a comment, and I'll just make a few about collegial steering. As you know, collegial steering was revitalized, reformulized, you know, from what it originally was, which was only FA, really all the officers of the FA and two trustees. And the focus and the purpose changed a little bit, because it was intended to be an opportunity, a place for opportunity to negotiate issues in multi-year contracts. Well, that's not the focus anymore. The focus is to have these great, genuine discussions, and interestingly, with a Senate member who is an adjunct faculty member, we had one of the best discussions, in my opinion, at our most recent collegial steering meeting, where we all know that we have a large adjunct workforce, not only JCCC, but across the nation, and we, they came armed, or Loretta Laurie came armed with her, with a survey with a 71% response rate, and that's significant, obviously, given, we have a little over 600 adjuncts on our campus, so to have that kind of response rate really backed up the comments that she made, and great questions that really informed all of us about the adjunct presence and what they need and what they, how many, much contributions they can and do make. And I think we're all, as faculty leadership groups, all of us are responding to that and welcoming ways that we can better serve and accommodate adjunct interests. So I think with that, I'll close my report and welcome you again to our party and my, the FA meeting, but also thank you all for an excellent year. It's been, it's been a very eventful year, but I look forward to working with you all in the future.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Any questions or comments from the trustees?
Congratulations on your reelection.
Well, thank you.
For you and for us.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Debbie. Appreciate it, and have a nice graduation.
Thank you.
Foundation, Trustee Cross.
Yes, Mr. Chair. The Foundation Board of Directors met on March 25th, as Trustee Sharp reported last month, so there's no meeting to report on this month. However, we would like to report that last May, the Foundation launched its Friends with Taste affinity program to help raise funds to support hospitality, the hospitality management program. After opening the New Hospitality and Culinary Academy in August, this group of more than 400 members feasted on dishes of our JCC culinary team, cupped coffee with the roastery, made mozzarella cheese with Chef Jasper Marabille, and learned the basics of wine tasting with Doug Frost. They also enjoyed a multi-course meal from Chef Andrea Trapanini, who visited us from our sister culinary school in Florence, Italy. The totals are in, and Friends with Taste helped raise more than $40,000 this year. What did I do wrong?
Oh, no.
I said, we need an exchange program with the Florence Restaurant.
I mispronounced it.
I'm helping you. We're going to go there together.
I apologize for his distraction.
No, it's okay.
We do have an exchange program with.
Oh, we're talking trustee exchange.
Oh, they're trustees, I'm sorry.
We figured there was one with the students.
Back to Trustee Cross. Do you have any other comments?
The Friends with Taste program helped raise more than $40,000 this past year for the college's foundation. These funds allowed our students, chefs, to experience the hard work and dedication it takes to not only compete in recognized culinary competitions in places like South Korea and Hong Kong, but to bring home medals from these competitions as well. Memberships and Friends with Taste also helped purchase an additional culinary equipment that ensures our curriculum remains state-of-the-art. And finally, memberships help fund several scholarships to outstanding students to help continue their education in the culinary field. On Tuesday, May 20th, the Foundation will celebrate these accomplishments at our annual luncheon in Hospitality and Culinary Academy, and we hope that all trustees and cabinet members will join us. And that concludes my report.
Any questions or comments of Trustee Cross? Thanks. Foundation is alive and well. I was able to, I'm a member of Friends of Taste, and I did attend the dinner with Chef Trapani from Florence, and it was really quite an amazing evening.
Yes, it was. One quick point of information, if I may, Mr. President. I'd like to move for this body to resolve and officially recognize and congratulate Mrs. Molly Baumgartner on being appointed to the Kansas State Senate. It's terribly exciting for her and her family, and I'd ask unanimous consent to note this in the minutes for the evening.
Thank you. We congratulate her. We mentioned a little bit about off-camera before the meeting, but thank you, Trustee Cross. Well said. Congratulations.
And I do notice everyone is speaking into their microphone now that she's a senator and she's got all of our attentions, and we're all looking forward.
Okay. Next item is the consent agenda. It's the time where we deal with a number of routine items in a quick manner, in a large-group manner. Is there any item that a member would like to pull off the agenda? Trustee Stewart, and then Trustee Lindstrom.
I'd like to pull B1 retirements.
Okay.
Is that what?
Ditto. Is that the one you were going to pull? So we'll pull B1 retirements and deal with that individually. Any other items to be pulled off the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, well, we'll go with Drummond, move, and Musil, second. All in favor, any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Let's go back to B1, Trustee Stewart.
Yeah, I just want to comment, you know, I look here, and in each meeting, we have retirements show up, and obviously Dennis Day is sitting out in the audience here, and I see his name retiring, and I just, we lose a lot of institutional knowledge every month. You know, we're all, I guess, getting to that age, the baby boomers are, where retirement's coming, and we've lost a lot already, but we have, how many years, Dennis, have you been at the college?
30.
30 years. Linda O'Brien, I don't know how many years Linda O'Brien has been here, and Susan Sled All, all retiring at the end of this year. Actually, Susan's in July. And I just want to comment that, you know, we are losing this knowledge and this long-term service, and, but it's exciting, we have new people coming in, but really want to thank Dennis and all the retirees for the years of service and dedication that they've made to this college and made it better, and we appreciate that. You need to come up with a couple more ideas, the 9:00 p.m., that's one this year, but you've got a lot more that you can come up with between, before December 31st. Thank you, Dennis.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion to approve B1?
So moved.
Stewart moves, and Drummond seconds. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Wait a minute, I was going to vote no.
Let the record show that Lindstrom. Before, we do have an executive session this evening, and I would just like to remind all the trustees of the several graduation ceremonies that have been referenced earlier. And I appreciate Terry putting the list together and getting that all taken care of, so we have a busy few days upcoming with graduation ceremonies, and thank you for your participation. I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing consultation with an attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship, in order to protect the privilege in the board's communication with its attorney on legal matters. The session is going, is scheduled to last 1 hour and 15 minutes. I would also like to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, which will be the second item. I would like to invite Judy Korbe, Barbara Larson, Terry Schleist, and Tanya Wilson, and Joe Sobchak to attend that session. So I would, I would ask for a motion.
I would so move with the clarification that the 1 hour and 15 minutes is for both items.
It's for both items. We'll plan to spend about 15 minutes on the first item and up to an hour on the second.
Second.
Executive session will start, it's about, I have on the clock on the back, about 6:49, 6:48. We'll start at 6:55. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Opposed, motion carries. We have returned from executive session. No action was taken. Do I hear a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Our May meeting is adjourned.